The show is about to begin.
How are you?
Now, this is what, number eight?
It's number eight, sir.
Uh, this is our eighth town hall meeting. How many have been here for all eight? I've only been for seven. You haven't been for all eight.
Actually, I did last night.
Yeah, so we're even. So, some of us have only been there for seven. So, as these go along, I talk less and listen more. Because this week, we've had three. And we had three government, we had the county commission, city Miami Beach commission, the city of Miami commission today. So, I'm prepared to have some sodas and some empanadas and listen, so. And in every one of these, I have a little connection. My first, one of my first places I lived was in Kendall and 112th Avenue and Kendall Drive years ago. And across the street was tomato fields. And the turnpike was not there. I guess Dayland was here. And across the street, the tomato fields were to the west. Across the street to the south was Janet Reno's original home. You know, they had peacocks there and that was the sound. So, this was a long, a long, long time ago, so we all have. And I was actually involved in building Metro Rail in a past life and getting it funded, getting it built, involved in the joint development, the first hotel over there, the Marriott. So, we're excited about that. And I think that transit line has helped spur the development of this area with the hospital and downtown Dayland. And as we know, that transit line goes all the way to the airport, including the Orange Line. So, we were at another place last night and somebody talked about, "We need to have medical meetings and medical tourism." And we asked that folk to please join us tonight because this is, uh, this hotel was built for that hospital and including Miami Cancer Center. And I know our board member, Ben Malar, is gonna be along here. And where's the general manager, James? James left? Well... Well, and at Stentia, okay, are you James?
No.
But let's thank the hotel and let you speak for a moment for paying for all of this tonight.
Well, welcome, everybody, to our new hotel here in town, of course. Thank you, it's a pleasure to have you all here. My name is Rosa Albert, I'm the Director of Sales and Marketing. Some of you already know me from another, also, previous life in another cities and other hotels. Well, we're very honored to host this event, of course, and learn all the details about our lovely city of Miami. If anybody would like to take a tour after that, please let me know. We are, uh, we open on February 13th of this year, just a few months ago. We have close to 10,000 square footage of meeting space and 184 rooms. And again, we're here to serve you, a beautiful, beautiful, and very nice restaurant called Table 55. And we're special, we have a nice happy hour that runs from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. And then on Fridays, we open at 12 noon for happy hour. So, anybody that isn't a good, leave early for work, you don't want a lot of people coming here. Thank you so much, okay?
Paul, there's James, what's his name for you? This is double dipping, we can't double dip. Okay, James, the general manager's here, you get to speak too, go ahead.
Welcome, everybody. Rosa, I think you told him everything?
Aren't you ready to expand and have an addition?
We would like to do that, yeah. We're still working on building occupancy, we just opened up about three months ago, so. But it's been great, very well received, a lot of positive feedback from the guests that stayed with us and restaurants been busy, so, yeah, we're off to the races. So, it's really good.
Where'd you come from, what's your background?
Florida, born and raised here, so this is actually coming home for me. First time in Miami, though. I'm from Melbourne Beach in the Atlantic. North middle Florida, yeah.
Well, it's an honor, right?
Yes, exactly.
Well, thank you for paying for all of this.
It was our pleasure, thanks for coming in tonight.
Connect another dot, I understand that the emergency room is right there, so if anybody has medical needs, you can just go right out the back door for that. Point of personal privilege, which we can do, then I'm gonna sit down and shut up. Longtime friend of ours, longtime friend of the industry is here. Cindy Lerner is in the house, she's a former mayor, but I consider once a mayor, always a mayor, of the great city of Pinecrest, just down the street, just across the street. And so, she's been a great supporter of the industry, she's here to listen. She is a declared candidate for a soon-to-be vacancy to the county commission, there are 13 of those districts. In fact, it's the district that I live in, that Rolando lives in, so we're gonna be really good tonight, so. But thank you for being here and good luck to you in the future. And good luck at the ballot box, so. Rolando?
Sure, thank you, Bill.
Let's hear it for Cindy, come on. You'll get a chance to talk, I know.
So, tonight's really gonna be about listening, but to you, but just a little more about us. There's a lot of friends in the room, but just in case who we are, the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau, I know that's a mouthful, sometimes we call it the GMCTB, the Bureau, which sounds rather intimidating. We are the official sales and marketing organization for Greater Miami and the beaches, Miami-Dade County, for the purposes of tourism, meetings, conventions, big events, we're that entity. And some of you, we've worked closely over the years, and it's about putting heads in beds, in new hotels, old hotels, bringing folks to our community. We have a newly refurbished convention center, that's on Miami Beach. When that convention center is full, it helps everyone, including folks out here through compression. So, that's, we're the entity that also helps bring a lot of big events, Super Bowls, we're the ones that put those bits together. We do that with a lot of amazing partners, including some of yourselves, so that's who we are. Bill is our president and CEO, I'm privileged to be the chief operating officer and the chief marketing officer. You guys figure out which one is funner? They're both actually really fun. So, I've been with the company for 27 odd years. My personal connection is one of my favorite experiences growing up was going to Dayland and, does anybody remember the Orange Julius?
Yeah.
Orange Julius. That swirly orange with the cream, the vanilla cream, that, at that food court, of course, that's long, long, I don't even think it exists anymore. But that was one of my fondest memories, I used to come as a little kid to Kendall, I guess that was Kendall, now we have East Kendall, we have West Kendall. And today's discussion, yes, it's about the Kendall area, but also, you may not be from the area, so it's not exclusive to Kendall. We're doing 15 of these, and in fact, there's a flyer in your chairs that'll show you the other, the other seven after tonight. So, you're more than welcome to join us on More Than One, but please, it's about getting some feedback. Real quick, as I mentioned, we are the official sales and marketing organization, as you would expect, we have a full complement of specialties, advertising, PR, social media, meetings, conventions. So, we've got dedicated efforts, sports and entertainment marketing, we have an area that focuses on LGBTQ marketing, cultural tourism, multicultural tourism, one of our most recent departments that we've added to the portfolio, which is a big part of what we do, is we wanna celebrate our diversity. And it's also about moving people around the community, we want more people to know more about Miami. We know we've got amazing beaches and nightlife and restaurants, but for us, a big, big marketing priority has been about showcasing the full breadth of the Miami experience. And a lot of it has to do with our great neighborhoods, and whether it's from South Beach to South Dade, from Homestead to Hialeah, from Aventura to Coral Gables. When you look back on our marketing programs, and we're not gonna do that tonight, you will see that we spend the bulk of our time talking about those neighborhoods and experiences so that people can stay longer, spend more money, support more jobs. So, quick snapshot, we don't just do it out of our home office, we have an office on downtown, we have a satellite office at the convention center, we have a one-person office up in DC to help us bring more meetings and conventions, and then we've got about 53 folks around the globe that are helping us support the home office with intelligence, sales and marketing support, some social media, which has become critically important. So, we're a fairly small footprint, but we have a global effort, which is important because half of our, you know, in essence, half of the people that are coming to our community are from international markets, the economic impact that they bring. So, we spend a lot of time throughout the globe. Bill talked about medical tourism, and this is something that we launched a couple of years ago under the umbrella of Miami Health, MiamiHealthCare.org. And we've got material, I know Kendall's, this area has many assets, shopping is one way that our tourists have experienced Kendall, they just don't know that it's Kendall. But whether it's Dayland, or whether it's the Falls, which all comprise the Kendall area, but also medical institutions like Baptist and what they've recently done with the, with their cancer center, it's pretty amazing. So, medical tourists are coming to Kendall in one shape, form, or fashion. So, we have a significant effort to showcase Miami as a medical tourism destination. You know, what are hospitals, right, really fancy hotel that people see a long time? So, okay, and here we go. And then lastly, you probably saw some of these boards around the room. As we like to proudly say, you know, travel and tourism equals jobs, 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 probably everyone in this room is either directly employed in the industry or has a lot of loved ones that are. So, there's a lot of jobs, I think the number is 142,000 jobs in our community. We had 20, we had 23.3 million visitors to our community last year, so that's about 16 and a half that spent at least one night, and we're getting a lot of day trippers, a lot of people that wanna experience our community, driving, whether it's from Palm Beach, Naples, even Orlando. So, day trippers is a phenomenon that we're tracking more closely than ever. And these tourists, when they come, not only are they spending their money, they're generating lots and lots of taxes. We estimate about $412 million worth of taxes, you add up the state sales taxes, the half percent that goes towards our public health system, our transportation system, and of course, all the related tourist taxes. So, there's a lot of support that tourists are giving to our community that sometimes doesn't get recognized, so we wanted to emphasize that. And there's some more information around the room that we're not gonna go into detail. So, why are we here? We're here because the Bureau, about every five or six years, develops a five-year strategic plan. And that's a critical process, and it's a roadmap for what we should be focusing on. And it's setting the priorities for not only the Bureau, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, but also the industry, as we proudly say, the number one industry in our community. So, we go through a very extensive process, we have a committee, we put on an RFP, we scan not only the country but the globe for a consultant that can help facilitate this process, we've done this several, several times. These were some of the companies that we went through and heard from, they presented to our committee, we had oral presentations, and ultimately, we chose who we feel are the best in class to do what we need to do, which is to develop this five-year strategic plan. And the great news is that the organization that we selected, Intervistas, has been involved in this industry for quite some time. They've been working with Miami International Airport on what we call air service development or routes. You know, the more direct flights that we have, we were talking earlier about direct service from Poland launching in June, we've recently launched Turkey, Morocco, Israel. So, this organization, Intervistas, has many specialties, one of the specialties that they've been working in our community for many, many years is working with our airport on bringing more airlines. But they also run the gamut of other tourism services, including consultancies and strategic planning. So, with no further ado, I'm gonna introduce Sonya Murray, who's the project lead on this, and they will be, you'll be listening to them and no longer from us. So, thank you, thank you for giving us your time.
I just wanna echo everybody's thanking you guys for coming, really, it means a lot to us, you have a long day, and you're spending two hours with us, and we really appreciate it. Like Rolando said, we're the consulting team that was hired to help them with the strategic plan. I'm Sonya Murray, I wanna introduce the team, Mr. Greg Oates, who's media brand travel tourism specialist, Greg Tally in the back, who's our conventions events specialist, and Michelle Simmons, who is our local Miami of 25 years and outreach specialist, and she's gonna talk a little bit more about all the outreach activities we're doing. So, we're engaged in a strategic plan. Probably some of you in this room have gone through a strategic planning process, these are the six elements that we're going to be covering overall. We started this process in mid-December, we're gonna end at the end of September, and we're getting into the tail end of our data collection piece, which Michelle will talk about in a minute. What this plan will do is help, as we look out over the next five years, and it's really difficult to sort of predict what the next five years are gonna bring because of the way the world is moving so fast, but it's gonna help identify some new opportunities to continue to drive more tourism, both leisure and meetings, conferences, and events, because we love those, we love those visitors. It's also gonna help the GMCTV to elevate their position in the community, it really solidify it, and help identify what issues, what sort of supporting issues around tourism can they either lead, facilitate, or support in a number of areas that is also going to be very helpful to the local community. So, with that, I'm gonna hand this over to Michelle, and she's gonna talk about the extensive outreach we've been doing. Thank you, Sonya.
Good evening, thank you again. As the outreach person, it really is special when I see people come out, because that's part of what I'm helping the GMCTV do, get people in the room, get your input, find out what your thoughts are. So, our engagement plan is comprised of a couple of components. We have had over 85-plus one-on-one interviews with a variety of stakeholders that go from heads of hotels all the way to directors of our airports and transportation, getting their information and their knowledge and their input on what they think tourism is and how we can make this better through this strategic plan. We've had meetings and workshops with the GMCTV management, and at the end of the process, we'll have a visioning workshop. 15 town hall meetings, this is number eight. We thought no neighborhood should be left behind, so there are, there are opportunities all over this county, and it's a very, it's very important. When we talk about having heritage neighborhoods, there's no way that you could only go to certain pockets and not cover this entire county, so that you can get the input of everyone in the diverse mix. Four focus groups, we had our last one today, we had techs and millennials, which was awesome. I have a millennial, I love, I love to hear them. Some people don't like them as much, but I think, I'm kinda crazy about it. So, we've had great focus sessions, and that allowed us to get really close and personal with certain groups to get information from them. We did hospitality, we did business and economic development, real estate, as I said, we have an up-and-coming tech world here in Miami, and we got some information from them today, so they've been very helpful and very successful. Seven committee facilitations of the GMCTV board. And we also have done surveys, Destination Net is a survey that was created specifically, and it's owned by individuals, so. Lot of good stuff going on, and a lot of times, when you have a strategic plan, you don't go as in-depth as I think we have on behalf of the GMCTV to go really deep down into the pockets to get the information. So, let's get to the town hall discussion. We are going to ask this evening, evening, four questions, these are our themes, unique experiences, new tourism opportunities, residents, quality of life, and GMCTV new initiatives. So, we're gonna start off with the first question, we're gonna take about 20 minutes, and I want you to take a look at this, what are the existing tourism experiences that are not being sufficiently showcased? And we're specifically talking tonight about Kendall, but as Rolando said, this goes across our entire county, so if there's something that you want to mention as it relates to this particular question that's not specific to this area, please feel free to do that. What are the existing tourism experiences that are not being sufficiently showcased? Now, this is probably the first night we had no microphone, and I love it, because I don't have to go in front to you, you can just get up and tell me what you wanna tell me. We would ask that you just raise your hand, because a lot of times, we get really excited and passionate within these discussions, so we wanna be able to capture all of the information, we are taking notes, everything will be noted. So, who would like to take a stab at the first, what are the existing tourism experiences that are not being sufficiently showcased in this area? Yes, sir?
Maybe agricultural tourism, places like Robert Was Here, the Schneby Winery, stuff like that, maybe?
Yes, yes.
Colley Square?
And that's exactly what we, we're down at South Dade Cultural Arts Center, and a lot of conversation was being had about the Redlands. And the joke I made is I live in Aventura, and to come down here is a day trip for me. I gotta pack my lunch, and I gotta get, the rest of the joke was, I don't have to have quarters anymore because now we got a side pass. But, you know, we want to be able to get everyone to feel like they can come to opposite sides of this county and own the entire county, not just the pockets, so that's good. Anyone else? Yes. I thought I saw somebody. Yes, ma'am.
Pinecrest Gardens, I have to, I have to tell, Pinecrest purchased the Perage Jungle site in 2002. We ended up bringing in a cultural arts consultant from Boston in 2009, I guess, after I was elected, because they had had consultants come up with proposals for what to do, and nothing really sounded very exciting, so it was still sitting there with the Banyan Bowl, which was the bird bowl where the shows had been, still had wood chips on the ground from the shows, and nothing had been done with the 500-seat amphitheater. So, we went out to the cultural arts community and got input, if we created a venue for open-air cultural arts, would you come, would you participate? And we had resounding yes, we would. So, we invested in new sound system and stage and lighting and seating and all of that, and the level of cultural arts that is now available for the greater South Dade community there is really very exciting and extraordinary. We have a jazz series, we have theater and dance, and opened the site for all the schools to do performances that we don't charge, so public schools, so there's wonderful community performance there, we have the Gardens, of course, which is a masterpiece, and it is finally getting some state support and county cultural arts support to help enhance it, but there is just so much more that could be done with a facility like that. And when I have seen some of the tourism pamphlets and things that in the past, I haven't seen Pinecrest Gardens mentioned, so I think that there's a lot more that could be done to do.
As I was researching the different organizations and groups of people, we wanted to ensure were invited to this meeting, I saw that, and all I've ever known was Fairchild Gardens. I've been here 25 years, so it is something that says, hey, you get into a, like we said, the silos and the pockets of your own neighborhood, you know, it's beautiful and it's happening someplace else, so absolutely, thank you. Yes, sir?
It's not, I don't know if it's under-advertised or not, but I'm just not sure how much we advertise to tourists our art scene when it's not art basil. All our places in Wynwood, all our different museums, I don't know how much we advertise that, and that would be, not that we don't advertise it enough, I'm just not sure.
You also have locations like Black Queen Marina, which is, which is far, not far from here, in addition to that, I mean, you never see advertised, everyone thinks about the growth of the Marina, and also, you know, up in, up north county, so Miami-Dade. You also have locations where the Cultural Arts Center in South Ridge. You know, I've never seen anything advertised. Recently, I was down there, and to me, it's a new building, pretty, but you don't see any events being advertised in that area.
I heard the Marina the first time from the mayor of the town in Cutler Bay. Again, you know, it's slightly embarrassing to be here all these years and just so many great things that you just have never heard of, so. Anything else, any other experience within this area that we think could be showcased better? And just put out there.
I would say in general, all of the coastal county parks that we see as, you know, neighborhood, neighborhood enhance places that we, we as families go, but shamefully, the county is not investing the way that it should in even maintenance, much less upgrading. But we've got Madison Hammock, and the saddest one is Chappy Field, Chappy Field's been closed for four years, the county just, let it go fallow, because there was contamination, but they have kayaking site that you can go off from there. With a little bit of maintenance and love and attention, all of these county parks could really be highlighted for, for a lot more tourist destinations as well.
Yeah, I would also say, you talk about neighborhoods, but there, you know, this is not Coral Gables, but there's a lot of architectural, you know, the buildings, the housing, there's some very, very fine housing and architectural designs in these neighborhoods that are quite unique, that could be, you know, combined with other areas too, that's the nature of the, of the interest. And bring it down to, and bring it down to this area.
What I think is so interesting is I'm hearing some of the same names and parks that I heard all the way down in South Dade, which feels a little deeper than where we are, so that, that does speak to this end of the county knowing about all of the jewels that are maybe hidden to some of us, that, that could be exposed.
You also have to consider a lot of seasonal stuff too, because I know during Christmas in Pinecrest, they always have huge bike shows where people compete, like, you know, to have the best house, you know, what's lit up, and Pinecrest's probably Metal Day, you know, West Kendall, Kendall, and it would be really good for, like, you know, a competition to be showcased, you know, that would bring tourism, and bring maybe some people from the north side of the county down.
Anything else?
Can I, can I plant a question? What about downtown Dayland? I know it's this area that's kind of up and coming, so I'm resisting the urge, but, you know, just, so any, any thoughts on, on that? Then I'll be quiet, I'll try.
Raise my hand on that as well, because the restaurants in downtown Dayland are like winning all sorts of awards there, it's, it's a dining scene like Gable's dining scene now.
That's a new restaurant in town, from what I hear.
I, I agree with her, as far as downtown Dayland, the restaurants are, are good, are amazing, actually. But downtown, you know, is focused on a lot of housing, you know, apartments, so tourism wise, I mean, in case where somebody needs to stay long-term and, you know, they don't wanna stay at a hotel, something they know would be something, you know, interesting, there's a lot of rentals in that area. But as far as, you know, you know, tourism itself besides Dayland and the Falls, there really is, you know, very limited, I believe, when it comes to this area.
Kind of to tag along to what they're saying, the restaurant scene, it's true. In down here in this area, you have downtown Dayland where you have Yi, which, you know, James Beard nominated chef, or you have Two Chefs, you have Chef Adrian's, there's, there's quite a few, you know, really top-quality restaurants that, that can be showcased as a dining scene.
Were there not some restaurants on the water?
That was Madison Hammock, but that was destroyed by the hurricane.
They were never able to rebuild.
Red Fish Grill, yeah. Which was beautiful, by the way.
So, some things we could consider looking at again?
Um, there was even a place about two miles north here on Sunset Drive, Scully's, it was featured on our Food Network.
Yeah, the diners' drive-ins and dive? I saw it, yeah, okay.
Yeah. About half a year ago, maybe?
Yes, ma'am. We have two, what are we, the only place, I think, in the continental U.S., we have two national parks?
Correct.
Here.
I think that came up at South Dade, was it?
Only county in the entire country with parks, two national parks.
Could you, could you call the name again?
Uskane and Everglades, National Parks.
So, we're ready to go to number two? Okay. I'm gonna pitch it back to Sonya, and I'll cover it with those.
Thank you for all the comments, really. So, question two is, what are the tourism services or products that you do not, that do not yet exist but should be developed? I'm sure all of you travel somewhere.
So I'm sure all of you travel somewhere in the last year and maybe you've seen something where you said, oh, wow, we think we're doing that here, or we are doing that here, maybe we need to promote it more. But what are the tourism services or products that do not yet exist but should be developed? Yes, sir.
I'm gonna focus on the word services or maybe take off the S and just use the word service. Where, you know, you know, we, we're lucky enough to live in this, in this wonderful paradise and we sort of like keep it to ourselves a lot, but so many people do not understand the real meaning of tourism and the service, the service that they need to provide to the incoming tourist, whether they speak English, Spanish, Polish, Russian, or whatever. And I think there has to be some sort of a, you know, awareness that they, that they, all of us who live here, I have to be made aware of the importance of tourism to the area.
Oh, it's true. I mean, that, so just as an aside, the GM CBB wears a lot of hats, but one of them is to definitely educate, you know, everybody hears about negative stuff and there, there is negative stuff that comes along with tourism growth, but there's so many positives and the economic impact of being able to quantify the job support is, 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 uh, is very important. And they, they spend a lot of time trying to educate people on the awareness of it. And you know, the, the, the taxes that I spend when I stay in the hotels are higher, you know, and the transportation system here, so, you know, you're welcome. But, but no, it's, it's, it's really, it gets missed a lot because people think about other, other sort of negative issues. And the service, the service piece has come up a lot, so. Thank you. Anybody else?
About transportation?
Well, definitely transportation.
Expand on that a little bit.
The, the metro rail just goes to Dayland South and then from there to go further south into the Pinecrest area, whether it's the Falls or something like that, it's, it can be tricky. Especially if you're out, if you're from out of town.
Access, access.
Absolutely access.
It's a big one. That is a big one and it's not an issue that is gonna get solved overnight and it's gonna involve a lot of people, but you know, maybe how can the GM CBB help to convene the right people and continue to push it? Like Bill was saying, he helped earlier with, with the Tri-Rail, right?
No.
Metro Rail, sorry, Metro Rail.
And on the flip side of that, we're having the Super Bowl. Metro Rail doesn't go to the stadium. Never got that far. That's, absolutely.
Any other tourism services or products that you think could be developed down in this region? Yes?
When I think about, we go to New York a couple of times a year and always do touristy things there. And there are so many ways of seeing New York by, by foot. There are a lot of walking tours all over, you can, there, there are food tours all over the city. We have some walking tours and some tours mostly through history Miami. I love going on Dr. George's tours in just water and walking and, and bus, but they don't, that, there's not sufficient number and frequency of them to make them available for the tourists throughout the year. They're, they're a rare occurrence that you can find the one. So I think there should be those kind of tours on a much more frequent basis. And the water tours, just going through, there are environmental groups that will take you out on the bay and take you along the whole coast and share with you the vibrancy and the importance of keeping the bay healthy, but they're educational, they, they are not really tourism related, but they would make a fabulous tourist resource, service to provide.
And I think there is a segment of the market that would very much, that would appeal to, especially nowadays as we're becoming more aware of how we need to start focusing on that more. So thank you for those comments. Yes?
Maybe a tourist information office down south in one of the malls, whether it is Dayland or the Falls. That way when people, people automatically gravitate towards the malls, but maybe by having a tourist information office, they can, we can educate them as to what else there is to see in the area.
As they're there right on the spot.
Sure.
Trying to figure out what to do. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we're gonna move to question three. And Greg O.
Thank you. So it's interesting, you mentioned agricultural tourism and food tourism and farm tourism. And every time we come to Kendall and down south, this keeps coming up. So clearly there's something here, more sustainable food, food security, healthier food, food chain, supply chain, how there's a lot of focus on that. And this is sort of being, starting to be known as the, not the breadbasket of the state just in terms of supply, but in terms of also potentially developing that into tourism product. Now you have this, this is really interesting, medical tourism, one of the fastest growing segments worldwide, but this is one of the first times we've seen a new hotel right on a hospital campus. It's very direct, very intentional, right? I'm getting to a point here in a second. Also, aligned with that, wellness tourism, wellness is becoming much more democratic. It's not elitist thing. It's something that's more and more people are focused on about how to live healthier lives, right? So there's a chance here where all that can be, be combined. And now this whole South Dade, Kendall can be thought of as you come here to learn how the world can live and work and play together in a more healthier way. So that's what's going to this, that's now we're talking about elevating the community in new ways, using tourism to enhance what it means to live in this community and what this community can offer. So really aligning tourism and community development. And that's the question here. So this is more intangible, this is more legacy impacts for the community and to ensure that the community is involved and benefiting in a more widespread way. So it's not just the hospitals and the hotels and the iconic attractions, but more of the community can sort of benefit from the visitor and the economic expense coming in here. What are your thoughts on how the area can use tourism to improve the quality of life for residents? And every time we ask this, we go in a bunch of different directions, so really we're up for anything here.
I think that's an excellent point. I can tie those things together into, you know, the concept of wellness, where you can do yoga at Derry Estate and then get fresh produce from Homestead at one of the farm-to-table restaurants in the area. I think that by thinking along those lines and creating these types of platforms or environments will also help the quality of life for the residents because they'll have more options. They don't have to drive to Brickell or South Beach for a night out at a fancy restaurant. Maybe you have it down here where you have, again, the fresh produce from, from Homestead and, and that sort of thing. So it'll help enhance the quality of life for the residents as well, if you have more options down here. That can be supported by the tourists as well.
Anyone else?
I've always been very jealous of the ability of Miami Beach to enjoy the benefits of a tourism tax, to be able to fold that back into quality of life issues for their residents because that's an additional source of revenue that they allow them to have access to. But I think if there were opportunities for a specialized tourist tax in other parts of the county to do the same thing and enhance either transit or other quality of life issues in, in those neighborhoods, then it would, they'd see that, that there is an impact that comes back to help residents by supporting more.
That's something that City Hall is leading, that's like a tourism assessment fee or tax or tourism improvement district, different names to that. That's something that local, has that been discussed here?
If, if I may, again, I keep promising I won't say too much, but I think it's important for, for this group. So as I alluded to earlier, there, there are, you know, about $270 million in tourist taxes, but bulk of those taxes actually go into the infrastructure development that all of us enjoy. So whether it's the Adrian R. Center, and some of these have been controversial over the years and we know the history and we won't go through it. But, so the, the bulk of the tourist tax dollars that are collected are reinvested into the community, into some of those infrastructure product, projects that, you know, you and I enjoy as residents. The sales tax, so tourists pay about thirty-eight percent of all the sales taxes. Now, the six percent sales tax unfortunately doesn't stay locally, goes up to Tallahassee and some people argue whether we get our fair share back because we're in different communities. The other percent, that one percent, which makes our tax seven percent, that does stay local. So half of that one percent goes to help support our public health system, Jackson, which serves all. And the other half percent goes into the infamous People's Transportation Plan and that money flows back to the community. In fact, I think it helps support trolley systems throughout, you know, there's a lot of controversy, but I guess my bigger point is, is that a lot, the bulk of those tourist taxes are, are in fact reinvested into a lot of the projects and there's debate whether they're, you know, some good, some bad. We as a bureau receive about eleven percent of all of tourist taxes that are collected, eleven percent, so that we can continue to market that. So I just thought I wanted to share that with the group. But there has been talk about, there's a tourism improvement districts is a model that has been used in other places throughout the country, which in essence is, is a, it's a tax or an assessment. And I know that, that concept has also been heavily debated, whether it's even legal technically, because it's a tax without calling it a tax. But anyway, I'll, I'll be around all, you know, I can answer more questions about tax because there's, there are so many different tourist-related taxes. Our bigger point is that we feel passionately that tourists are paying their fair share, they're helping our school system by the sales taxes that they're supporting, they're helping pave our roads with, you know, so, but I have some more detail that we can take off line afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in terms of how tourism can improve quality of life and build a stronger community here in Kendall and South Dade?
I'm going to say it's a two-way street. If tourism can provide better-paying jobs and you have people under less financial stress, they're gonna give the tourists better service. Quality of living for the residents, because we have so many of them involved in the industry, will provide better service. Somebody working three jobs is not providing good service.
It's part of the quality of life for residents.
The better service the tourists are gonna get.
The visitor experience.
So they, it's a two-way street and the better the tourist experience where service is part of what they talk about when they come here, not just the beach and the sun, the more tourists will get and the more they'll be willing to spend.
Actually, okay, building on that, Greg, you, you have more fun about that question.
Well, in addressing this whole question about the balance and many communities, including Miami, use major events to market the, the city. Art Basel is probably one of the best examples in all of the United States about how that one event with its global recognition literally put Miami on the map, you could say. And whether it's Ultra, whether it's the marathon, Super Bowl, World Cup, all those sorts of things are in fact a tool that a lot of destinations use to attract more attention. The, the media buy from those you couldn't afford. And so that's one of the reasons why we bid for those and, and want to win them here. Yet they can become controversial because of the impact on the residents. So we talk about the balance of the quality of life, that where does it kind of directly come together? There's a lot of time with this question about these special events or in some communities, simply the sheer numbers of tourists. And so, and that's become a global issue. I mean, Venice, for all intents and purposes, is no longer what it was. Barcelona, we're now talking about fees for people to access central parts of some of the big European destinations. But there are other cities that are just saying, no más, we don't want any more, stop. So that's what kind of flows into this question too. It's an important lifeblood for what it does represent for Miami Dade County. It is the number one job driver and in terms of economic impact, but we want to be sensitive to these issues, right? Because we don't want to kind of kill the golden goose because it provides so much to us. So that's why this question of balance becomes so important, to really address and think about and be able to kind of discuss intelligently about what are those trade-offs? And where do we want to kind of engage in a deeper conversation about those trade-offs?
Thank you, Greg. But that is probably the biggest conversation in terms of destination marketing shifting into destination management. You can see all these economic impact figures, but looking at more equitable economic impact and making sure that the economic spend is dispersed throughout the community. But also, you know, you have some really big players in the city that are talking about this too, and I'll give you two examples. One is Johan, who's the new director of the Arts Center. And he's going on listening tour now and his whole focus is to make the arts resonate with more kids and more communities, basically every community that he can think of doing these listening tours and talking to youth and talking to their parents about how can that facility become more relevant to them? So it's not this elitist ivory tower kind of thing, but you know, bringing students and residents to communities for discussions and then going up to these communities and how can we all come around art to talk about things like affordable housing and gun control and really serious issues and that an art, performing arts center can actually be a vehicle for having that conversation? So that's where their mindset is going, which is to shift from the past, right? It's not just all about opera and whatnot. So that's, that's the conversation. Now you can say, okay, is that real or not? But it's, it's something that they're talking about. Another example is Inter Miami, right? The football club. And speaking with their head of business development, a couple of days ago, he says the whole point of what they're doing is to position soccer as a global sport in a global city. And that's really the focus of everything we're doing here, is Miami's not just the gateway to Latin America, it's a gateway to the world, right? It's a global city. That's sort of the top of the pyramid in terms of what we're trying to do here. And they're saying soccer can help drive that message home. Not only that, but soccer is the most democratic sport in the world. All you need is a ball, right? Every community in the world, kids can find some way to play soccer. If it's not a ball, they'll find something to kick around, right? So the idea, okay, so they want to be, celebrate that sort of theme that's inherent in the games where everyone, and they said, you know, if there's a baker in Homestead, they gotta be able to afford to come to our games, which isn't always the case for a lot of professional sports, right? So, but they're also funneling money into soccer facilities in different communities. They're offering academies, their whole Freedom Park that they're planning on building. I know there's still, you know, some ways to go before this is all finalized, but how do they make that whole part not just about a, a big soccer stadium, but in terms of how people will move and communicate and gather in public spaces in the future and really create what they're saying is a smart city of the future, using soccer as a foundation for that? So this is ways that you can lean on these organizations. Okay, if the Performing Arts Center is saying that, well then this community needs to reach out to say, you need to come talk to us, we have kids here, you know, we want to connect them with this global conversation around art. Okay, you guys in the soccer, you know, you're doing all this, make sure you come here. So it's about learning what's going on in the community and starting to lean on some of these big players more. And that's just one more comment that I've been making with everyone that we're doing. Everyone wants, everyone says we need more focus from the CBB to promote us. But it's not just about that marketing and that push, it's also about the community creating its own content, telling your own stories, connect wellness and medical tourism and agritourism and create your own content so that the CBB can then share, right? The CBB becomes sort of that portal to a national, international audience. But it's also, a lot of times, we get the sense that there's not as much community engagement, working together to develop your own content. But what's cool is what's been brought a few times is that there's a lot of different communities here and that there's a sense of collaboration. Everyone's not just fighting for their own. So then create that kind of content that really connects the whole southern, you know, part of the city and establishes what you're really about. And it seems like there's a lot here, but you know, I don't know if we know those stories as well as we would like.
I think one of the, one of the, I think, attractions or something that, that should be exploited better in this area is the authenticity and the genuine, I guess, the being of this area, okay? There are certain areas, and I won't mention, that are man-made, that were, certain developers went and created something, not authentic, it's not real. This is, you know, the, the farms have always been down there, the bay has always been there. So I think that's one of the untold stories that this community can, can tell.
So now you have all these Bs, these assets, to tie into that, connect them together and create a necklace, right? That's really what we're talking about, because this is the real South Florida. You can, you can leverage that to the hill. People want that, that experience, right? So start connecting all those dots and tell us what that really looks like, what that means and if I like food. And if I like food, I go here. If I like culture, I go here, you know, ecotourism, what have you.
Right, or if I've got two days, give me a two-day itinerary of what are the things that I can piece together to spend two days down here, you know, not on a drive-by to the, to the Keys.
And this whole idea of leisure, exactly. Create that two-three, right? I'm coming here for work for three days, but I'm extending for three days. It's Florida, why would I not want to stay, right? But help me understand what it's here to do besides Wynwood and the beach, right? You got to hold my hand, say, "Come down here. This is where we want to show you."
I think Bill put it, we were further south in Dade County the other night, and he really talked about making South County a destination in and of itself, which means that story, right? It's got to be, kind of connect the dots and, and create the place so that then we can all figure out, okay, how do we market this? And how do we share this? And how do we get it out there to, to people that are starting to say, what else is here?
So it's not just a day trip. It's not just a, you know, something to do for five hours, come down. The other thing is, I lived in, up until five years ago, lived on the beach and went at least in the shores. And to me, down here was just a bunch of different names. I didn't really have an idea. I didn't know what Cutler Bay, you know, I didn't come here. I'd go to the Keys and drive right by everything, right? But last trip down here, we went to Homestead, Main Street. Phenomenal, right? Had no idea, driven by that literally dozens of times. So, you know, connecting all those pieces together. Now, this becomes its own destination. So for leisure, someone's coming to the new convention center, well, jeez, let me come down here for a couple of days. The wedding market, you know, seems to be taken with the red line, right? And all that, so there's a lot here.
I would kind of market, you know, if I had to place a city similar to what South Dade would be, it would have to be like Sonoma County. Because that would, that would be like, you know, similar.
Yeah.
You know, you have the vineyards, you know, you have vineyards. We have fruit, we have sandwiches, you know, we have close enough to the city. And that's.
It's not farm-to-table, it's farm, right? Right? But see, we're talking about, we're no longer just talking about tourism development. We're talking about community building, community development. And that's the other big focus here. Yeah, heads in beds, absolutely. But, you know, let's think about this maybe in a larger context.
Because if we make it better for the residents, it's automatically going to be better for visitors. So this idea of really this, this connection is as much about educating the residents of what are our unique things that they've got access to because they live here. And then we know there's nothing better than word of mouth, right? That, hey, this is a great place and you can come and stay and visit here. And that kind of might not exist right now, but I think we can create that.
And always, always focusing on making that as equitable as possible and spreading the benefits as much as possible. That's a big conversation that we keep hearing more and more here. I think that's about the right amount of time for that one.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I get to wrap this up and kind of bring it home. So the question is, we've now talked about, you know, what are the kind of underserved or under-resourced opportunities that exist here? What are the gaps that could possibly be filled? What are some of the issues around the balance, both kind of local and bigger in terms of the balance? So then to kind of wrap it up, what are the new initiatives that the GM CBB should develop in the next five years to help address some of these things that we've talked about? Either the new opportunities or the underserved opportunities or some of the gaps that we've talked about. One that comes immediately to mind is your comments are about service. And the idea that that does seem to be a vanishing kind of sense of pride about why you serve people and what that is as a career and how that then impacts customer service across Dade County. It has come up. We have had a longstanding program called, it begins with me, thank you, and a question of, with what we're hearing, is there time to kind of refocus that perhaps a little differently in terms of how we want to communicate again? So this idea, that may be something where clearly falls in our wheelhouse. We kind of represent hospitality writ large here in Miami-Dade County. And maybe that's an area that, that we should take a different look at or a new look at in terms of how we do that. One other things, based on what we've talked about tonight, come to your mind when we think about how else could the CBB be engaged? Another one that you talked about actually was advocacy. This issue about overall, do we do the best job we can at educating kind of up-down and sideways about the value of tourism, what it represents, why it's so important to us, what it actually does contribute? To now get into this conversation about, you know, big events and I'm really pissed off, I can't get home tonight, which I understand completely. But let's make sure we're talking about that's a weekend event and let us tell you what it brings to this community and what that means for our overall quality of life. So this idea of really being clear on that. We do see potentially some gaps where our elected leadership might not understand some of these issues as well as we do. And some of the discussions around what the opportunities are for these big events, the communication that goes into this. And is there an opportunity for a little bit better coordination of some of those that take into account all the different interests and what we've got to balance better and then communicate better? You were about to raise your hand, sir.
Yeah, no, I mean, I would imagine one of the things that could be worked on over the next five years is trying to figure out how we can leverage technology to tell these stories. That's how people consume, you know, information now. So whether it's through an app or, you know, tours that can be done via the phone or something like that.
Yeah, certainly leveraging digital technology right now is where everybody's spending their money. And for obvious reasons, that's where everybody's looking about where they're coming. And this idea of storytelling through video and pictures is definitely where everybody needs to be. And how do we maximize that to now tell these stories about South Dade, right? And that's where this issue of content coming from the community, we can then amplify. We could maybe look at a platform where there's a place for that to sit. We need the feeder content from the communities here in Dade to kind of populate that.
It has to be a partnership.
Yeah, yeah. But think about then the power of that as we push that globally, as we push that across the country to start telling the story of the other parts of the county and why you can spend three days not on the beach.
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
As a hotel person, I would like to see more fam trips focused on the area and bringing clients that would see the benefit of having their meetings here.
Okay, got it. So more customers brought to South Dade, for instance. Got it, got it? We do fam trips now, so that's a question of being selective about who would, you know, who's most likely to want to come, but also kind of opening up everybody's head about, again, the range of product that's here and the range of opportunity based on the group you may be bringing. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, hi. Well, through the twenty years that I've been living here after moving from Maryland, it's so nice to see and proud how the city has changed and developed, like downtown Miami, then Doral, which I have an opportunity to work with Yisela. And we have seen how it has grown and how popular it has become. But now as a resident of Kendall, because I live here now and I work here now with a new product, you know, I, I do feel the same way as some of my colleagues here in the hoteliers. We definitely have more, as a hotelier, more inventory coming to the whole entire city of Miami, you know, from Doral to everything. So as a hotelier, we do not feel the compression that we used to feel before. So we definitely would like to get the guidelines from the CBB, how as a resident and also as the people that work here, we could come out with those initiatives to bring the attention and birth this city of Kendall or South Dade or whatever we really want to call them. Because we, I personally have seen the birth of Doral and I'll participate into that proudly. And I feel that they, they really did an amazing job. Now is this time, you know, in Kendall. Not everybody knows that yet. But then we have to also identify those areas that we as a resident can start, you know, getting the marketing out. As you said, the farms, the Dearing State, you know, maybe work together as a community, because right now Kendall is one, Pinecrest is the other one, you know, Cutler Bay, you know, we all have to work together. So then we can, people don't care about where you are. It's just a matter of the streets, you know? We're all here in the South Dade and we should kind of like work that together. Perhaps having more of these meetings to educate the rest of the colleagues in the area, the restaurants, the commercial, the corporations. So then we can all participate to, participate together so we all can benefit at the same time.
So two great points in there that I'm hearing. One is, and we heard it down in South Dade, we don't have accommodations down in South County. Well, in fact, you do. So there is a question of it's not connecting through to everybody, that actually just a short drive north, there are accommodations here for people who want to come to South County and spend time and see everything that's here. So that's where it's again, kind of connecting the destination that is South County and be able to again demonstrate, we've got the accommodations, we've got great culinary experience, and then we've got all these other gems for people to spend two or three days. So that's where kind of saying we are a destination and let's identify those pieces and start talking about it as a collective as opposed to one-off, which then we can now talk about how do we market that better and kind of collaborate on those sorts of marketing. We have a brand-new convention center with a brand-new headquarter hotel coming online. And that's really going to put Miami back in the convention business, which has been about a two, two-and-a-half-year gap that I think will start to readdress that compression issue. Now, we've got a lot more inventory with more inventory coming. But if we start combining those two things, we've got compression happening because we're filling that convention center with the type of business that we want. And then we've got a developed destination down here in South County that can market itself for what it is. Now you start to have, I think everything's starting to work in your favor to do exactly what you're trying to do. Fill downtown, that helps pull some down. And if we've got a destination to sell down here, you start to address that issue as well. And I think that gives you then the leverage to start, let's have that conversation in the community. Let's start to pull these communities together and really talk about what we can and should be doing together. Yes, sir?
I think what we're missing in this area as well is nightlife. I mean, you have Copodoro coming back revamped. You have Regal City Center, Wynwood, South Beach. But I think this South Dade area just needs that something.
Right.
We have great shopping, great culinary, but I just think we need also a hub.
Right, so it's very sweet.
And not just constantly.
Yeah, I mean, I heard about this collection of restaurants where, Downtown Dade? So then it's kind of like, okay, that seems like we've got something there. How do you build? Right, so that's, that's the point, right? What are the gaps? And then you say, okay, here's a gap. Now let's, who do we talk to within the city? Who are the entrepreneurs doing restaurants that we could kind of have a conversation and say, hey, we think there's a need with the growing population down here and everything else that's happening. What could that look like? Cool. Yes, sir?
Another initiative, which I think we've already mentioned in passing, that helps South Dade but also the whole county, ecotourism.
Yeah.
I, I think we could push that more. We've got the resources and hopefully we're going to take better care of our environment. But that will, in particular, help South Dade. But the majority of the county has ecotourism destinations, which would help your overall bookings and that compression.
Yep, absolutely. And that did come up in South County as well, further south, this whole idea that it's here. How do we play it up? How do we talk about it? And that's on land and on water.
Just a quick thing to go back to this fam trip and to get writers down here. You know, Greg has been on a lot of meeting planner fam trips. I've been on a lot of media fam trips in a previous life. You know, you can offer them, Jennifer and the bureau can offer them, but that doesn't mean media is going to bite or planners are going to bite. You really have to go have that strong story and somewhat of a different story. But it's here, I think, if you want to attract like meetings media, is this idea of medical tourism where you actually have a hardcore physical facility here tied in with wellness meetings, right? So there now, you want a really specific nuance where with the leisure market, we're talking about all these different things, very creating the necklace. But here, very, very specific focus on medical meetings and wellness meetings and just overall as a hub of health, potentially health tech. But have that really focused to, in order to drive the interest from the meetings media. You really have to have that tight story. Because otherwise, you know, you're meeting, you're a writer and you look at this and it's like, well, I don't know, this doesn't sound that too interesting, it's too vague. So that's just something to think about.
Cool. Any other initiatives that you could think of or might have an idea for? Yes, ma'am?
Having been very involved with South Dade in the South Dade Transitway effort to expand and extend the metro rail so that there would in fact be a one-ticket ride from Homestead to as far north as it currently goes. But really, there should be a one-ticket ride from Homestead to the Broward County line. That was always intended. It's been from, I'm sure you've heard it in South Dade, from the workforce perspective, a significant amount of the tourist workforce live way far south.
Or way far north.
Or way far north. And to deliver them to their destination to provide the services, it is unconscionable that this county hasn't done that. So an initiative for you all would be to take a leadership role in advocating for the transit that has never happened. It's the same thing with, you know, the West Corridor, all of the corridors. Smart plan as far as I'm concerned is dead in the water right now. And it needs to be revived. But it needs leadership from an industry that sees from the workforce perspective and from delivering the tourists easily, efficiently, effectively to where we want them to go all over the county. Transit is the weak link in this county and that should be your number-one initiative.
So it probably won't surprise anyone to hear that that has in fact been the number-one topic everywhere we've been all over the county right now. So I do think there's a pinch movement opportunity. As you mentioned, we need some leadership at the county-wide level, politically, inter-agency, what have you to pull this together? The other piece of this has got to come from the citizens. Have got to say what the is going on here and how are we going to fix this? And I think if we actually kind of got that going from both ends to at least force the dialogue to tell us what the plan is, where's the money coming from and when's it going to start happening? And I think if you've kind of, got to come at it from two sides to put the pressure on the people who are actually making the decisions. And so I do think there's a leadership opportunity for an agency that kind of is the fulcrum between residence and tourism as, as an interesting place to kind of convene that. But at the same time, I think you all have to say, what's going on? We want it. We're demanding it for our future, the future of our children, the future of what we want to have in this community to make it work. And I think that to some degree speaks to the equity issues as well.
Absolutely.
In terms of what, what and how you all want this to be. Again, I think this is a two-pronged movement and the citizens need to speak up.
Well, it, it goes right with it because the difficulty and stress of your commute plus the cost are going to contribute directly to quality of life of the average worker in this county.
I don't disagree. And I think the takeaway from that, from our standpoint, is perhaps, again, the opportunity to convene some of this at that inter-agency level and just say, it's time to bring all the stakeholders together for that level conversation. And then I'm hoping someone from down in the community starts doing the same thing. Right, yeah? Cool. Any other thoughts or comments? This has been great. All right, then Orlando, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, well, it seems like there's plenty of time for happy hour. And speaking of Table 55, which is where they have that happy hour, they are a participant for Miami Spice Restaurant Month. I don't know if you knew, we were the, we're the folks behind that, how many years now, do you know?
Nineteen.
It's going to turn nineteen, almost nineteen years of Miami Spice. And speaking of initiatives, that's one initiative that was really an economic development initiative. It was, it was after nine-eleven, way back, and things were kind of not doing too well. So under our chair at that time, Stephen Haas, we launched that the following summer. And it was, started out rather simple. Let's get restaurants together, let's celebrate our culinary scene, which was very different at that time. And let's do it at a time of the year where we can really make a difference. And that's why it was August. And then we use that and Miami Spice Month, Miami Museums Month. And we've added all these other programs in addition to our general marketing. So, so those are some initiatives, we'll do more. I think some great ideas have come out. Without a doubt, transportation, we're all residents. And if it's good for us, it's good for them, for the tourists. And, and more and more, our research, tourists want to go where the locals hang out. And they, and, and I think your idea of nightlife in, in Dade, was that? You know, what was the place that used to be down in Kendall Town and Country?
Petronas.
What? Remember Squawton or Sizzoti? And then there was, wasn't there like Checkers? Not Checkers, uh, what was the other place?
Sudabank.
Sudabank. We're dating ourselves. Oh my goodness, we've been here a long time. But, but as I said earlier, we're, we're doing a lot, we're, we're on our own listening tour and we really, really appreciate you taking the time to provide us some feedback. There's some, some low-hanging fruit and some really big-ticket items and I think transportation is on that big-ticket item side. But we're optimistic, we have to be. That Smart Plan, which is kind of an oxymoron in some people's minds, but, but, you know, getting, getting transportation not only out west and north and south, but east to that convention center and which will hopefully alleviate traffic between the urban core and the convention center. So, you know, we, we're working with a lot of the elected officials and potentially even closer with you in the near future. Who knows where that goes? But, but I wanted to thank you for taking the time. I wanted to thank the intermissive team, a little round of applause for that. What did I do?
I was dying now.
Okay. What did I do? Was I supposed to do something? Okay. I think it's just a thank you, right? It's just that the thank you slide? Okay. Well, Bill jokingly said that he had to go to the emergency room next door, but actually, he did, he did have to leave us a little bit earlier because he did have to get across town for another event. But I know if you were here, he too would thank you. We're, we're going to be taking this information, as the team alluded to. I think we're, we're looking at October, September, October-ish. Have some of you been to our annual meeting? We do it once a year around October. I'm sure some of you. Our goal is to unveil our strategic plan at our annual meeting. I don't know if we have a location just yet, but we'll be getting out those dates, too. So thanks again. Give yourself a little round of applause.
One of the things that I really admire and respect about what GM-CVB has done with this process is we want it to be as open and collaborative with the entire community and residents of Miami-Dade County. So this is a public site where you can track what we're doing, what's coming up on the schedule, and we'll have the surveys on it for you as residents to take those surveys. So we want as much feedback as we can possibly get. So if you take a snapshot of that, we'd love to share, you to share it with your friends, your family, the people you work with, because clearly there are more residents down here than sitting in this room. All of them have ideas and thoughts and we want to pull all that in and through that site. You'll have the opportunity to do that.
And if you have a lot of idle time on your hands, all of the town halls we're doing have been videotaped and will be up on the site. So you can look at all of them if you can't get to them. So we're trying to make this as transparent and process as, actually, they are as possible.
And then in addition to the website, there's the email. Pretty simple, strategicplan@gmcb.com. You may be leaving here after that happy hour drink, you know, the juices start flowing creatively. Just not while you're driving, but go ahead and shoot us a little email and we'll take that. So thank you again, thank you.